Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Of course today everybody coming out today is, it looks like it's going raining right now, but as you tell, I've got a new haircut, so that's why I'm late. So, um, tell you what's going on, uh, we heard you on the roof, yeah, is that correct? And, um, Israel has been delayed for because it's raining on Tampa, so they've not started. They haven't started yet, right? Okay, they've not, they've not started yet. Um, let's see what else I can think of. Got going on, all the AOS dealers out there in the parking lot, according to Redline that, out there, not roaming away. Uh, somebody's come up with some good ideas before, thought about taking it and make it all golf cart across the front, but I think the last part from the handicap toward the golf clubhouse is going to be just handicaps. So, I mean, yes, so we're having lined properly like when once over here on the, that way. I've been asked a lot of questions about a lot of things this week. I've been answering fines and things like that, or, you know, talking to people about violations and stuff like that. I'm getting reduced. Um, I know we mentioned last week about the budget, was that at the board meeting, um, on what, um, about what it's going to be. I think because in, in my opinion, we're going to have to raise the assessments about five dollars to cover the minimum wage going up and the cost of living going up. Uh, that's my opinion. Um, I wish it'd been, been different, but it's not because when you add the minimum wage up per employee going up, and you do that, and you times it out per week, and then it adds up to, well, it truly adds up to about fifty-two dollars and a half, is what it should be, but my total is just down by fifty. So, that's my opinion. That's not the finance committee's opinion or anything. I don't know what they're going to come back with as far as that goes. As far as, um, the question that was asked at the board meeting, uh, the letter I read from Jerry Craft, I think we've got a, a answer to that. The most of it I asked go to the vote by the membership, that we cannot answer that as far as like just changing like staff members to be voting on by the membership. Um, let's see, if anybody has any questions about anything, I would be glad to answer them, anything that they've heard somewhere, um, that may not be true, I'll give you the truth, because that's what I was looking for, to give you the truth on this, whether it be good, bad, whatever. If anybody got any questions about anything. And, um, I don't see any questions, or yes, Larry, what you got?
On the pickup truck, it's just two companies that were contacted?
No, as far as pickup truck does, it was, it was three or four, I'm thinking it was three Toyota dealerships, a Chevrolet dealership and a Ford dealership. Yeah, so, um, but right now, the, the way it works is, they, we can get cheaper price a little bit from the Chevy dealership, but the warranty's not as good. The warranty on the Toyota is unleaded lifetime drive, drive frame warranty. So, that was pretty good. And that was a lot better than the, um, the Ford, you only got like a little bit more on trading for the, for the cars, for the car, and they didn't even know your warranty or nothing, so as far as what, you know, they gave you a standard warranty, but you don't get the extended, and that was lifetime. We do have that on paper. So, yes, Yolene?
Are singles mingled? Questions, are we allowed to bring outsiders into our singles mingle? Like, do we want to mix those?
Okay, right now, we're still letting singles in from the outside or in, or like guests in, but that may change because I got a call this morning about somebody wanting to know about COVID and stuff like that. We do know that the variant is getting larger, I mean, getting more people infected, so we have to address that issue. Uh, some, some restaurants have closed or doing cleaning because people in this county are getting infected by the virus, so that's something we're going to have to address, I think. Well, they already got singles on Saturday night, so, but, um, I mean, if you want to have singles, single bing, you can have it outside, I guess, but, um, but if, um, let's see what else I think I've got going on.
Can I answer that, Jerry?
Yeah, what did you ask?
Did you call the singles bingles, the, the leader, the president of the club? Joy? It's in the book. So, are you part of the singles club, or?
No, we're not.
Not yet?
No.
Okay, well, they're meeting here next week. Actually, it might be this area, I think. Um, so, uh, no, either, next week, but, yes, outsiders are allowed to come to the clubhouse, no matter what club you're on, no matter where you are. Okay, so? Uh, pardon me?
Outside thoroughbatty?
Since June fourteenth, yes.
All right, it's ending. Right around the end. Have bangers, have bangers.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Uh, Jerry Craft, I've got a question here, says, can you, uh, real quick, uh, explain a bit about the budget and its allocations?
Okay, the way the budget works is, you've got two parts, based when you, when you, when you vote on it. You've got an operating budget and you've got reserves. The way it's set up is you cannot take from reserves to, and then to operate inside. So, we talked about the budget being short, which we know is short because of the, um, the pay increases for the minimum wage, uh, we cannot take money from the reserves, so as Larry has been saying that, I think, because his president, he would know a lot about that too, is, is they have to be fully funded. Your voting has to be fully funded. That means regardless of if you're short or not, you have to put, put the same amount in over ten months, rightly, and, and you can't touch it. So, if you're short, you have to either cut payroll or you have to cut something back because you can't touch money. I wish it'd be that simple, where you can take money out of reserves and put it over the operating side, but it don't work that way. The state of Florida says that's illegal, illegal to do. So, um, that's why we need to, um, we need to vote for increase. I mean, there's no other way around it. Uh, either we vote for an increase of, um, for the operating budget, or we have to cut payroll. If we have to cut payroll, that means we have to close the clubhouse, maybe one day a week or two days a week, or we might have to send something different to guard Shaq, maybe knock off third shift people, and that's just the reality of it is, is if you don't have funds, you can't put the help, can't put the help, you got to close things. Am I right on that, saying that, Vince, because what do we have to worry? Please be still, I'm looking, but, that's the only, that's the only way to be. The rest of the stuff, as far as cutting the budget goes, they have trimmed everything possible because the costs of goods have increased, like the gas prices have started going up, the cost of putting oil in the cars is going up, the cost of tires is going up, all the raw materials are going up, and a prime example is this roof right here. They say that the reason they're holding off on it is because materials have gone up so dramatically that they cannot pay their bill, basically, we're not going to make, what you're saying, any kind of profit because of the material costs going up. And am I right in saying that, that some of the raw materials are coming out of Texas and they don't have them?
Yes, the, um, they're having a, a problem with the insulation and the covering. Um, the covering comes out of Texas, so that's where they, where they make the actual covering for the roof, and that's all, that's all pretty much back ordered for everyone, so I don't think anybody's doing any TPOs right now.
So, I hope that answered your question on mine about as far as the budget goes, goes, hm, I don't want to be the only way to deal with it there as far as what's still waiting on the audit to come back. She asked for the reserve, she, does she, this, this morning, the lady's doing, oh, it's sudden, I know it's close to being done, so we'll see what that got, and there might be some kind of new ground in that, but I can't tell you how big much, but we'll see what that happens with that. Um, the floor is still being done next week.
Yep.
Okay, that crack back there, you see it when you come through, come through each door, that door outside over there, you can see all the cracks in the floor, and they're going to finish fixing that, and that's covered by the warranty. So, can't think of anything right now. I think probably as far as the car goes, I can say something on that. That truck is going to be a silver Toyota, as far as I know, and like I said, it's got a lifetime, I mean, a lifetime drive tank warranty, and it's going to be silver, it's going to have just code enforcement, it'll have nothing to do with, will be no security sticker on it, nothing like that. And, um, I don't know how much he's getting off the tray, I think it was like a thousand dollars on that, on that Chevy Sonic out there, but, uh, I got your answer, I got an answer to a question that was asked, and in section fifteen of leasing the owner, it says, at least fifteen days prior to, to any person who is above the age of eighteen, residing in a period created in thirty days, or accumulated say more than thirty days in any three hundred sixty-five day period, whether, whether it's as a tenant, family member, guest, or other, while she'll complete and deliver to BCO an application of residency permitting the BCO to perform a full background investigation. I think I answered y'all's question, I believe, um, about why, why they do that, but I got on the sports paper right here, and that was in the rule, that was in the rules and regulations, and, uh, that's the issue that I got, which approved, this has, or it was approved one twenty twenty-one, that says section article six, section five, that are B, and they had number five, so that might be the, that might be the difficult one, but anyway, this is the latest part of it, if y'all want to see it, y'all work it through. Um, let's see, um, trying to think what else we got, hm, let's see, the few sort of, and the reason, I'm going to say this about the budget, the reason you see things like the truck being bought, you see the computer being bought, it does come out of reserves, it doesn't come out of the office side. And I know that sounds strange, it was strange to me last year when I, when I thought, well, if we can move money, take the money out of reserves to worry about the pay going up, and then somebody said, well, that, it was illegal, so I checked to make sure, and then just correct, that it is illegal. And I, I mean, I just, I asked his attorney, can I do something illegal to fix something illegally, and he said, no. And I was thinking, was there any way, any way to do this without, there's just no possible way. I just can't think of it, and I've talked to other ones on the board, and they say the same thing, is maybe there's a solution to it, but we can't find it nowhere that , um, and that's just the reality. I can try to sugarcoat this thing, but, um, we can do what we can on our side, or on the management side, to cut their expenses, which I think are just not much of a legal way, you know, whatsoever to cut, cut down expenses, and I am going to look at the, like, maybe cut down a number of times, like, go home down the streets for violations, see if they've been in compliance or whatever, because I think that'll save some fuel, may not think of saving them thousands, thousands of dollars, but at least it's something, on our end, and see how much paper they use, um, maybe what, the printer paper, I mean, the printer, the toner and things like that, maybe when you shave it all that way, but as far as what, what we've seen since, since I took, since I took, um, presidency, is I've been looking at all that stuff, what could be used, you know, somebody said something about what's the possibility of, like, saving the trash, for example, if it's got stuff in there, including the trash, maybe reusing the trash bag over, like, picking, or, uh, somebody's mentioned that. Somebody mentioned they, um, I'm trying to think of what he said, said that. Oh, he mentioned something about charging people, um, if their guests, something about giving them pool passes, charging for pool passes, and charging for using, some of them, like, using the weight room air and stuff, because they come by a pool pass to use it. We thought, he mentioned something about why don't we charge the guests for, um, coming to the clubs? I'm thinking, well, that's just an idea thrown out there by him, but I don't know if we can do that or not, so I thought I'd just say that, that any ideas may have, or about, might be something to look at, um, but the main thing is we have to tell people is, anything is, anything we spend money on, we know it's coming out of reserves, and I told, told Vince that, the, to, uh, like I say, when we reservice the tennis courts down there, which we're thinking about doing, that money come out of reserves, and you can't move a mire to the operating budget, that's what I, yes, man? Now then, I can't tell you, how long's it been at that? Vince, do you know the number?
Two years, Jerry? Three years? Second, this is second year. When year was voted down?
Everybody's saying two years on that. Um, I know that it's not increased last year. When they threw the figures out there, I'm thinking, when I saw it, fifty-two dollars in change, I was thinking, oh, man, that's ridiculous, but then, so that means I had somehow cut, somehow come up with cutting almost, um, what you figure, one dollar, somebody said one dollar is thirty-three thousand, and I think, well, it's more like, probably more mine, but I think it's more like, like twenty-eight thousand because of it, so you think, you got to cut that much off each fixed dollar, is that right, Larry?
I'd go with thirty.
Yeah, so, um, and that's why I seen it, I said, hell, we got to get that down below fifty, but there's no way to get down to forty-five, or forty-seven, I didn't add it up. We took every individual in here and looked at what they was being paid now, what they'll go to when the minimum wage goes up, and there's just, there's no possible way to keep the same amount for pay. There's just no way to make, no way. And so, so far, everybody knows that, or most people that's called me have said they willing to, even the ones that are eighty-five, nine years old, have said to me that would be one of the paying, paying, because what can you do, you can't go against the state, you can't go against state authority on it, so that's where we end up with this thing, is we got to pay people, what minimum wage is, and just think it's not this year, not just this year, each year, it's got to go up between now and time it gets to fifteen dollars, twice. I look at fifteen dollars, and when you count out the employees, it's almost end up being close to, almost one point to the median. Then you figure taxes in on that, you figure the wage, I mean, the increase in gift products and goods, and talk about reserve being fully funded, you're talking about closer than being dollar budget, and that's just, no, it's just amazing, man. But, of course, the way the state authority is, when you move down here, most places you live at, you end up paying like almost eight hundred to a thousand dollars in homeowners thing, and this is one of the best budgets there is, and, and we can do what we can, I'll do what I can to keep them down as low as possible. Uh, we won't try to be, uh, spend money frivolously, um, I don't believe in that. Um, so if anybody's got any more questions, I'm glad to answer, answer, yes, Larry?
Talk a little bit about that wage thing. The states require us to go off so much for minimum.
Right.
Hold on, man.
Vince is going to bring your mic home.
The, the question is on the wages, and the state mandates that we're going to bring the minimum wage up. I don't know how many employees we have at minimum wage. That's so much money, or are you talking about giving everybody the same raise, the entire staff, everybody working?
No, I'm, I'm honest, I'm talking about just people going from like nine thirty-seven to?
To ten.
To ten, or whatever it is, I'm not talking about doing that, because I think those, the thing that's making a bug, bug rate, should, if there is any kind of raise, it's merit-based and not automatic, because any place I've ever worked at, it's always been merit raises and not automatic raises, and order is not fair or to, when you put this burden on people, it's not fair or to, to go across the board like that, because, um, already enough hardship on this, on the other end, them having, outside of raising, or us wanting to raise it, and we should be a steward of their money, because they're paying, paying a lot of rent, they're in assessments, so they want to go down as low as they can, and that's a way to do it. I mean, that'd be selfish on my part if I said, I said, look, it's, it's just not, I'm not going to do that, because I don't know if they've done that in the past enough, but I'm not going to.
I'm very glad it's you sitting there and not me.
My?
When we went after more than one dollar, you sort of got voted down, and you want to go five dollars, so that's going to be a big chore.
Well, I know it's going to be, I know it's going to be a big chore, but when you think about how much the, think about how much a dollar is, the increase in minimum wage and figure out how many hours a person works a week, and you do that times fifty-two, then that's where you get it, because it's more than just, it's more than just a handful, there's probably over half the people, well over half the people are making that minimum wage part. So, um, um, just to tell you a great example, and we figured it out from, for the, like I say, when it goes up in September, for example, is the difference between, the, when it goes up to now, per acre is almost ten thousand dollars. So, you have, you do that, so you got to figure, you got January and next year, always September, and then goes back up again, so then it puts an even farther up there. So, uh, when you look at it in the long run, bitch, when you get to the fifteen dollar range, it goes to almost, it's almost fifty thousand dollars a paper, or it's twenty-eight six now. So, that tells you what the difference is going to be in the long term. And plus, you got to figure, or you may raise the minimum wage, but we have to, part of that, we have to pay, like, not just what the minimum, what the wages are, but taxes increase as well, because they get a higher tax bracket, or like, for example, right now, we have to match social security, right? So, when you make more money, naturally, on our side, you got, it's going to go up. Like, for example, I figured that, that, that right now is twenty-eight six is more than it is. Well, by the time you add taxes and that, I looked at, I think I got one in this book I completed, I looked it up this morning, that we had a paper that was twenty-eight thousand something, and that was back in March. Well, the taxes on that, on that, that particular week to pay like social security and federal income tax and all that, on twenty-eight thousand was nearly six thousand dollars. I think I just wanted to look at, was thirty-seven, was thirty, was thirty-seven or thirty-four thousand, and then I looked at another one too, comparing, I don't know if I got it here or not. I looked at another one that was, I think, twenty-two, and, yeah, it was five thousand dollars, just to the one that was twenty-two thousand. That paper, so you think about that, so much, we had to pay in tax. Um, this year, this year, I got right from these code enforcement, and it's got, um, one, two, three, four. Everybody, about four people are making less than, less than what you would say minimum wage, you're going to make, less than ten dollars. That's what I was looking at. So, this probably got twenty-five people in it, four, see, four, ten, yeah, close to twenty-five. Of course, some of them, um, feeling is when people have COVID, or they security got COVID, or somebody takes a vacation and things like that, so, yeah.
Next year goes over to twenty-nine?
Hmm.
Or more than that, right?
Let's see, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, but yes, about twenty-four, something like that, twenty-four, twenty-five, I think, and when this leaves, just for, for code enforcement, I think, or even one employee, see it all together, but you don't, of course, you don't have, five, five, you don't have everybody working the same day, so. One of the examples of what's going on here. Okay, let's see, it's not. Okay, okay, what I've got in front of me here is, okay, right here is, has, will be right now seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and then next year is nine hundred and four thousand dollars. That is based on thirty-five hours a week, but that's every. That is based on thirty five hours a week, but that's every employee and I know that's not gonna be the case, not gonna be that much, but if it was to pay everybody, it was gonna be like I said, what you talking about, you asked me earlier, it was not being this is nine hundred fifty, nine hundred fifty five thousand. So it's gonna be fifty five thou, fifty thousand different, you paid everybody, but cause right now it's, um, twenty eight six, not counting it, counting the taxes. And when it goes up, it's gonna be thirty four thousand three hundred and sixteen per year. Yeah. Yeah, like right now, that is, um, twenty eight six, that's gonna be yeah, that's right, it's six thousand difference per week. And that's, that's based on what it's gonna be the first of October through the end of the year. So it's gonna go twenty eight to thirty four. And then all next year it'll be thirty four except for the last seven pay periods and it'll be thirty six thousand and that, that's what it looks like, um. And that's solely based on, based on what it's gonna, gonna at one dollar, next year it'll go up to, from ten to eleven dollars on the the minimum wage rule. And that is including that's not including by spending over the eleven dollars, I mean over, yeah, over the eleven dollars. So, um, if anybody's got any other questions, um, yes.
When are you expecting to have the vote on, on this, uh, if you're willing to do this?
Well, the vote will be like it was last year, except it'll be, you'll have more time to vote. I know it, they present the budget to the whole board the first, first Tuesday of next month, that's right, second. And then it goes to the printer and then it'll go, come out and we'll mail it from there and probably have to, like, the board meeting on that second, what is that, third Wednesday, right, of November?
Yeah, the, the budget, the budget vote is, is, uh, is the day before, the Wednesday night board meeting in November. The budget count is that day and then what happens in, in September here, the workshop, they'll come out and, and present the budget, they, they'll vote on it, goes out to the printer, goes out to everybody and then, and then you're able to bring the, send the ballot in or come to clubhouse here on that Tuesday to vote. And everything goes back to the office, they count it and they present the findings of the budget, whether it's approved or disapproved, um, at that Wednesday board meeting.
Okay, I think there's forty one people on here that work here one time or another, like fill in's or uh, somebody's out sick or somebody goes on vacation, cause you gotta use them. You got nineteen that are, I don't know if anybody can see it or not, but I'm gonna give you the exact total, I'll show you the sheet. Everybody in the yellow, that is going up. So it's only nineteen that's not going up. And then, so that makes you, what, twenty two, twenty three is going up for the year, they going up for minimum wage department. So, um, that'll tell you what, what we're looking at and that's, that's of course, this spreadsheet over right there. Um, and of course, the aside from the labor, uh, you gotta figure basically to run this place is roughly right around twenty five thousand a month. Uh, that probably, um, I'm gonna say between, probably twenty thousand of these utilities and was actually more than that, but I do know the power bill here is almost eleven thousand. And that is the lights, the street lights are almost, um, sevens, almost eight thousand dollars, something like that, so. So you got to figure all the rest of it in there, that's what I've been looking at, cause I broke it all down, um. See if I can look for it right here.
Is the, Jerry, do you know if the ju, uh,
do you know if the budget vote's gonna be, uh, is gonna be online again this year?
Yeah, there's gonna be, it's gonna be online, but we're gonna have a stipulation on that if they, um, people want to fax, you know, state law says if they need faxing, they gotta be well aware, knowing their vote is not secure. Again, I'm gonna show you, tell you, send right here what, what utilities are on this place so you'll know that I'm gonna use the same sheet that I had on, had the other morning, I think it tells me on it. And this is from, this is what it was last year, this is what I got my hands on. Electricity bill for the year was, was eighty four thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and nineteen cent. That's what it was for the year for twenty twenty. And this is one for this year so far, electricity bill so far for this year is forty eight thousand eight hundred and ninety five dollars. And that was for that was for the street lights and then the rest of the electricity comes to us, uh, that's combined with this. So it comes sixty nine thousand one hundred and twenty one dollars. The water and shore is three thousand eight hundred dollars so far. Death toll bill is seven thousand seventy one dollars so far. And then the vehicle maintenance, vehicle maintenance, that's like, I've got a list here, a list, it's gonna come out the other night, um. This is the transaction sheet for, for everything right here. And this goes from, this is actually from July through Marches and it shows all the bills, all the checks that were wrote. And shows working, shows working, the cost on here is like two thousand dollars a paper, or actually a month. And it's got the car expenses on it and then it's got what's, we had to pay spectrum every month to, like, I think they missed what the system might go right then.
Yes.
All right.
This is free here.
What's that?
Our, 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 um, we pay for the business internet, I think that's what it is, and then we get the bulk account for all TV sets, that's free.
But things like that that you seen here, um. If I can find anything that will be, um, be wasted, um. Like really big thing to be wasted, there is not one, I've been looked all through this thing. I looked at the payroll list this gone out and see if there was a waste. Somebody asked a question about how come a payroll is large in March, larger than normal in March, and that was because there was a lot of, there was vacation time, took, there was people out at the garshack and they had to, they still got paid for their sick time, plus you had to sign fill in, that's why it was more expensive that month, um, than normal. There was over a hundred, over a hundred some hours were used for like, I'm gonna say you like filling, I call it filling, but it was for like somebody taking off. And I ended up this morning, it's over a hundred, hundred dollars, just for that one per, one, one thing. And then, of course, it raised the, the wages up, but it then also raised the taxes up on it. Um, anything I can answer right, and I've got most to answer right here. As far as as far as what the bills are, I mean, that's unreal, like, the, almost, almost this whole page is just electrical. The electric bill, that age, and then this page right here is another one. Of just electrical bills from July of last year to March of this year. Um. And this, of course, has always been on the community's last, last year, and it shows, um, says how much we spent on everything, but, um, oh yeah, I will tell you some good news. News and views she's up to, what she says, they were almost six thousand dollars now. So that means we're gonna clear basically at least I'm gonna say right at twelve hundred, eleven hundred, something like that, we're gonna clear that a, a month. And we are going to take it from tw- two thousand coffees down to twenty five hun, I mean fifteen hundred or seventeen hundred. Get a better deal than that's all, be more money in our pocket. And actually, News and Views is a lot more organized than what it was, this copy right here is just a mockup of what it's gonna look like, where they add zoom going, that kind of thing. So that's good news, I'll take care, take care of some, um. But I don't have anything else unless y'all got some other questions, anybody else got any questions on, uh, online?
The reason why it was so much in March, you had three pay periods in, in March.
Okay.
You actually, you actually, I actually got three checks in March.
Okay.
Just the way that dates came up.
No, yeah, some, one of them had like the, I'm gonna say the paper it ended like on the, um.
Got paid on the third, then we got paid on, on the thirty first.
Yeah, but.
There was actually three, there were actually three checks in that month.
Yeah, so, so that was, she pointed out to me that, that, um, some of the months might have had sadly worked out or the day y'all get, day we, y'all got paid was like, um, like at the first month and then.
The middle month and then, then the, the end of the month, yeah.
So does anybody got any questions they would like to ask you too? Okay, we're just, it's quarter to three, we're just, by hand, if you're willing, ask me if you wanna keep it private, that too.
News and views be available online?
Yeah, we've cut, is that what she said or is that? Oh yeah, it's supposed to be on, it's gonna be online, we've got with the, Todd, the IT person is going to, um, put News and Views online, so maybe they cut down on the number of copies we print each month. I appreciate everybody coming out and if they got any ideas, yes? Do you know what it's for, Vince?
He used to do something, wasn't it, uh, Jingles or Jingles they used to bank?
Military, is it?
Huh?
Is it military thing when they, they did this raise, part of their program was to write bill?
No, um. It was donated after nine eleven from, uh, I believe this, uh, best theories. And, um, now, uh, I think it's run when someone is, is basically going, gone into remission of cancer.
Yeah, cause they meant to really grow it.
Okay, well, I appreciate everybody coming out and I didn't have much information over this, this today.
Jerry, Jerry wants to know when the budget audit is gonna, gonna be completed.
Well, they gotta, they gotta be, I've already signed the last papers on it for them to get permission for to get the in, invoices from the attorneys. And then this morning they sent, I think one, budget reserves, like plan all out, you know, they wanted that this morning, so I'm expecting it, um, asking an email uh, that Wednesday and I were supposed to be the third, the third week of this month, let me see if there's anything changing, changing. And she gonna try to give before the, before the third Friday, so I'm hoping to be by the second Friday of the month. That of course is, is next Friday, I'm gonna get to this, I won't hold nothing back, I'll give and tell you what it is. Um, hold on, man, somebody wanna ask me a question?
What?
Maybe they'll call back, um. Was from Congress out in Carolina, so I don't know, let's see. Okay, I, I don't have anything on here then, I appreciate y'all coming out today. Okay, what's the question? What's this question?
Jerry, did you get a, a rough idea what the carryover was last year?
Um, as far as I can tell, I think the carryover was probably, they probably spent, I mean, the best way I can tell is, cause I don't, I've not seen no carryover. So, uh, I imagine if there wasn't any carryover, it went to pay the reserves, pay, where they got to pay the reserves, cause I actually signed a check for forty two thousand that went into the reserve for September, cause I forgot. And I also, I don't have it in here, I have another check that was written for two hundred and thirty three thousand back in February. It doesn't say whether it was, it just says for reserves, it don't say it's, it's February through November or February of November last year, let's see what it said, I might have here. Hmm. Everything's all spread out here. Not even, well, if I can remember correctly, I think it was day, day definitely with the second. But I don't know if they were, I can't tell if they were, if they were actually over or short, the, the computer says one thing, but of course, you know, a lot of stuff got spent like the new wall down there and soundproof in that room and, um, you know, when they hired somebody, hired Carol and Lynn, they you know, so any money they got saved to be on payroll. I mean, I don't know if there's, there was any left or not, I have not seen the carryover of anything. Um, I just know that, that right now, we take, I took the reserve, I mean, I took the money that was left out in assessments, save for the rest of the year, and then I took, um, like what I thought was gonna be income, like additional income, like on here, which got like, um, the mowing, the V C U. the mowing, the VCR, VCR files, they stopped fees and all that. I thought it's gonna be, the first figure I was given was nine forty thousand. And then we took off stuff that normally wouldn't see anyway because it goes to the county attorney. So that went down to forty-seven. So I took those two and add them together and then took what I thought was the average cost of everything to run a place, which was around twenty, twenty-five thousand. And then I, I'm seeing.
Spent it that awful quick.
Well, nobody's spending it, cause-
They had fifty thousand to keep going down. So now, spend it too bad.
Well, nobody, nobody's spending that money. Yeah, so, uh, so that's what we come up with, or I come up with last year. Like, for example, this right here is, when you look at additional income on this thing, it says they're expecting, um, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars or two hundred and twenty thousand fifty dollars. Okay, when you go over to this page, what's all that's on it? Shows right here the two thousand twenty-one base. Showing down the bottom, says other income total was one ninety-six, one hundred and ninety-six thousand fifty dollars. But what was there at the end of of six thirty, twenty was only eighty-three thousand. So that told me if you double that, and then right here in this one says projected. The projected number was one fifty-nine. So that means they were short from one ninety-six to one fifty-nine. So they're basically short thirty-seven thousand off. Okay, and that was, that was what there was gonna be according to the budget was. Well, the same deal was, it's got like expense reimbursement, twenty-seven thousand, that's mainly, we don't know, you know, it's not here. So that's twenty-seven thousand and you got the least, missleance income, which is another twenty thousand. That made them forty-nine thousand short, plus, plus that. Um, plus the shortage from one fifty-nine to one six, one ninety-six. And then you figured minimum wage and all that, that's why I come up with my figure of one, of one hundred and twenty thousand. Was what I was thinking that was gonna be short. Now, as far as, I always, the only thing I think of was, was where they had shut down, shut down here, got rid of. They let people go in the office, so they were over everything there for. But places where they could have possibly spent more money, when they or anybody could spend more money was, a great example was when I, you look at this figure, the computer consultant only says it was only sixty-five hundred, but as you notice, when I called it down here, it was almost, you know, twice that. So you're looking at that six, seven thousand dollars short and you go down here to, uh, people don't look at the fact that you have, uh, you have nothing in the reserves that they down here on seven oh one, you have nothing. You have bad debt right there, which is above it, which is fourteen thousand bad debt. Um, you have attorney fees, which, which is thirty thousand, then you have fifteen thousand attorney fees. Well, one of those, some of those attorney fees you gotta give to the attorney, you don't get no income for that. And that's just a couple of examples right there, uh, what's going on with that, so, uh, so maybe it was just accounting was, accrual accounting might be different from the cash, you know, cash, I mean, um, that's, this is figured on cash basis right here, and the one I got in here that's, that's figured on a accrual, which is, which is monthly reserve right there. That page is, says accrual basis up here, so you gotta go one of those, you can't go back and forth between. But I didn't call anything out, I don't know. The cash basis for actually what's the bank right now and that's probably, let's see, I'll give you, for example, let's see, one account has sixty-three, well, at this time in April going fifth, twenty thirty had sixty-three thousand in it. One account had three hundred and eighty-five thousand, one account had fifty-seven thousand and one account well said, right here total, so totaling that thing is seven hundred and twenty-two thousand one oh six is what I got right to that page. But it's really gotta look at it in depth to, to, to find some stuff, so. Um, think about this right here is, um, this page right here has got got forty-five thousand and one, I'll be reserved for administrative, even the clubhouse has three hundred and ten thousand. Thousand, I'm assuming that's end of year, and the pole and record ration area has thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. Um, minus has this is surplus on it, so it says minus one thousand, one hundred and seventy-one. And it says minus again five thousand, five sixty-two. And it says security thirteen thousand and thirty-eight and then at asylum, that's one hundred and sixty, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, so.
Got all the reserves and dropped it off?
Yeah, that, that would be the ex, excess, I'm assuming that must be over, over what's what was in there, except maybe clubhouse, cause that same block, that's what it would be with, with everything in it. Because I know we're doing, take, was taking the roof out of that money. And where they moved, where stuff got moved around was in, they could do that, cause I got that email from accounts that they move it within the elements as long as they don't short, like, for example, this is four hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, which is reserves this year. And if you look at it close, that some of the reserves are like, say, for example, the cars, they put a hundred, a hundred dollars a month, which would be a thousand dollars, cause they only do it for ten months and then L, asylum, they put a hundred and twenty dollars a month in there, that'd make you twelve hundred dollars. And then the security, they put two, two thousand, five hundred dollars in there a month, twenty-five thousand. And then the maintenance equipment, they only put eleven hundred dollars in there a month, which is eleven thousand. And then the RV and maintenance was two hundred dollars a month, maybe two thousand. And then the clubhouse was gonna be pole and records, they put thirty thousand in there, which would be, well, they put three thousand a month, they're up to thirty thousand. And then the help, clubhouse elements where the roof is, they were probably put three hundred and forty-seven thousand in there, which is, but thirty-four thousand. Yeah, thirty-four thousand a month in there and then administrative was thirty thousand, they put three thousand in there a month, so. So a lot of this is, um, most of it's on paper, but I wish I had it all. That shows exactly what's in the reserves. Um, they're in CDs and money market accounts. I don't think I have that paper in my, my session. No, I don't have that, I do not have that one. If anybody has any more questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Have our accounts been adjusted so we're not keeping more than two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, well, yes. Well, I think while he was looking at putting, uh, that says one into a, a, um, credit union because it was over two hundred and fifty thousand. And we have, I have wrote one check for, uh, the main one that was over was, uh, SunTrust and it was four hundred and thirteen this year, it was, it got moved.
So do you tend to probably have a date on the audit now? Could it be this month?
Yes, it'll be this month, it's gonna be the third Friday of this month, it felt like this, she's trying to get it done, so, yeah. Yeah.
All right, my question is how are you gonna go to you, that valve? I'm trying to set up stuff for the veterans in here, um, do something like Memorial Day, busy day, is that valve?
I've seen this valve before, program, like that.
Do you have any information that you can, you can?
So I just, I just remembered they brought the honor guard in and they did their honor guard thing and they ran the valve.
All right, thank you, that was all the question.
All right, well, thank you for the time, like, everybody coming out, I'll leave you right there. Unless you're gonna go somewhere or anything.
Nope.
Okay, all right, thank you Vince.
Where you giving it outside?